I'd like to call the order of the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees with Anderson Year in High School District. It's Wednesday, September 17th, 6:00 p.m. Roll call, Stacy Adams here.
Joe Gibson here.
Jackie LaBarra here.
Amonna Weeks here.
Julia Ranaro here.
Do we know if our student representative is ever going to be here?
He emailed me and he used to track me at Susan Bill Day.
Okay, so this is the first two we missed. Is he gonna...
This is the first week for him to come here, didn't come till August.
August. So he should be able to come hopefully.
Exactly, so I don't know.
So all of them present? Erica?
Yes.
One, two, is there any public comment regarding closed session items? Nope. Alright, we're gonna go to closed session.
I'd like to resume the regular open session of the Anderson Union High School Report Meeting. 3.1 Flat Salute led by Jennifer Parks. Salute, pledge.
I believe in the citizens of the United States of America and to repel and thwart these things. One nation, united, God and God in the heavens, with the reading of the gospel of all.
I serve on this board because I believe in America's great experiment, which from its founding only exists because of open discussion and debate. As trustees, we often translate controversial issues into policy to govern our district effectively and support every student's academic journey. Although it has been hard at times, we have navigated the last two and a half years well, tackling tough issues through open discussion and debate, both with each other and with our community. In light of Charlie Kirk's murder, I urge us to strengthen our commitment as role models for our district's youth. Demonstrating civic engagement through proper channels with honor, integrity, and a steadfast rejection of violence. With that, I'd like to call for a moment of silence to honor the life and legacy of Charlie Kirk. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. 3.2 Approve the Agenda for the Regular Meeting of the Anderson Union High School District Board of Trustees for September 17, 2025.
I have a question. On our, on our agenda for 6.6, it says we are having a discussion, but I thought that the, I thought that we were having a discussion and an action. For 6.5?
It's under action and discussion items.
You have it under action and discussion? I'd show it while I have discussion. So it's in action, but it just says discussion. So could we take action on it after we discuss?
It's under the heading action and discussion. At least it's not here if you did just do this into.
Okay. Also on 6.24, it also said informational, but it's under action. So we are taking action on that site?
6.24?
Yes.
That's just business and financial category. We've already taken action on the item.
It says action here on the agenda, but in the packet it says informational, I'm headed. So I wasn't sure which one it is.
I said it's been in front of me. It's under the business and financial category, 6.24, action on a memo, a M O U with three tires shot.
Right. And then when you go to that agenda item, it says information. With recommendations. I think it, you guys have the draft. On the other one, it's actually action. Oh, okay. So on the one that she printed, I know it says action. Okay, thank you. So action on there, but on here, so it's. It should be informational. Okay. Because we don't have to take action on that one, on the M O U. So we need to make that change right now. Change it to discussion. Or just. Thank you. So with the changes for 6.24, making that informational and being able to take action on 6.6, do I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Motion to approve.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
We already had a motion to approve, I just don't.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
But she said with the changes though.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So motion passes 5.0. 3.3 Report out of board action taken in pro session. There was no action taken in pro session, so there's no report out. 3.4 Student reps will report on athletics, activities, and academics.
Good evening. Good evening, board members and Superintendent Mr. Parker. Thank you for having me. My name is Peyton Linders and I'm a junior at Anderson High School. I'm so excited to be invited. It's your opportunity. Some past events, August 25th, all teachers started meeting with their advisory class students and parents. They're planning to incorporate N W E A as well as academic classes, so they're reading community service, college credits, and internship. And schedule adjustments to the first quarter conversation. On August 29th, Ms. Hernandez, Mr. Lewis, Ms. Hernandez and Mr. Lewis, of 18 students, kayaking at the Oak Bottom Marina at Westkey Town Lake. They had a blast and learned about Westkey Town Lake from a local ranger. On September 5th through the 7th, Ms. Hernandez and Mr. Lewis took a group of students for a camping trip at the Volcano Adventure Camp in Lassen National Park. Students had the opportunity to experience nature and participate in major event programs. Leadership held our first walk-in Friday, September 12th. The theme was Y2K and was a free event for all of Kentucky students. We had an amazing outcome with over half of our students showing up. People continue to talk about it and everyone especially loved our karaoke room and our dress to impress room with the red carpet. Some new updates, almost all students have finished the N W E A testing. Upcoming event, September 9th and 10th, freshmen prepare their first individual class presentation and reflection. September 18th, forestry students will go on a trip, a field trip to Anderson River Park with Mr. Lewis. Students will meet a forester to practice forestry skills and tree measurements. September 22nd, we will have our first leadership advisory board meeting for this school, for this school year. September 22nd, math, reading, and writing levels will begin based on N W E, N W E A assessment data. September 24th at 6:00 PM, Ms. McWilliams will be hosting a junior and senior parent information night. September 24th through the 27th, Mr. Lewis will be taking a group of students to the forestry challenge. October 2nd, Fall Picture, Fall Picture Day with Studio Five Trio. October 17th, there will be a field trip to Shasta College with Ms. Hernandez, Ms. Temperton, Ms. Boyston, and students will see a free drama production in Midsummer Night's Dream. October 24th, there will be a field trip to Sacramento National Wildlife Refuge with Mr. Lewis and Ms. Hernandez. Students will tour the wildlife refuge in with Rangers. October 28th, Fall Picture Retakes and Senior Borage with Studio Five Trio. And Loma Data, ninth graders, we have 36 students, 10th graders, we have 18 students, 11th graders, we have 47 students, and 12th graders, we have 27 students. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you. I do have one question. So on your big three, community service, college credits, and internship, is community service required for graduation?
Yeah. So, so it depends. Well, yes, new service is required. You have to get 40 hours to graduate. Freshmen through seniors, that's 10 hours per year. Depending on if you come in later in the year or depending on what year you come in, that is how many hours you get, so. You guys have any other questions?
I do. How did you see Y2K?
Okay, Y2K, so. We had to really think about still applying our dress code and making sure that we don't go all crazy over here. So we did. A bunch of us wore super baggy clothes, like cargo pants and all of that stuff. A bunch of us did that. A lot of the boys dressed up as Adam Samson. So that was that. Yeah, that's where most of us did it though. It was super baggy clothes. You can see actually all of our, well, not all of them, but most of the outfits. We have a TikTok, Emerson High School Official, and our outfits are on there too. So we did like a little introduction and we come back to it, so. Yeah. You guys have any other questions?
I love the direction Eleanor is taking, and I still taking the school and you representing it. You're doing a great job, Pete.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
Hello. Hello. My name is Lily Jean O'Reilly, the A S C's senior class president at Anderson High School. Athletics, we have swim. We have a roster of 23 on the swim team this season and excited to host our North Cal Invite October 3rd and 4th. Swimmers are dropping times consistently and bonding well as a team. Tennis. Congrats goes out to the girls tennis team. Cindy, Samantha, Eva, Jasmine, Lily Jean, Taylor, Stephanie, Rachel, and Christina. Our Lady Cubs have won their last four matches, eating live oak, red bluff, U prep, and just last night, Y Rika. The team is gritty and they're just having a great time playing tennis, highly motivated and truly dedicated. Football. The football team is off to a hot start, going 2-1 through the first three weeks. It was a really close game last week with Los Flumis, but unfortunately, we took our first loss. Our quarterback, Cooper Crye, is leading our section in passing yards, and one of our wide receivers, Michael Manley, is number one in receiving yards. We look, we look to become 3-1 this Friday as we play Los Malinos on the road. Girls' basketball. Girls' basketball had a meeting yesterday in the library for anybody interested in playing this year. It was a great turnout and the players were able to meet all of the coaches. Baseball. Anderson Baseball is hosting a community day this Saturday, September 20th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Anderson High School batting cages. They want to thank Sunrise Escavating for donating turf to cover the concrete flooring. This will help protect our baseballs and make the cages a lot better for the kids. Bring your family, say hello, and if you'd like, lend a hand. Free barbecue. They will be grilling burgers and hot dogs for everyone. They're excited to meet you and start building the future at Anderson Baseball together. FSA. Beginning of this month, FSA had their first football concession stand. The students have also participated in catering for the Riley Baugh Memorial Cornell Tournament. On September 13th, the members helped park cars at the Nash Ranch Mudrun Parking Lot. They are looking forward to their first FSA meeting on the 24th of September and also for the freshmen to purchase the pay in free hand launch. They have also been selling tickets for the upcoming drive-through dinner on October 3rd. The heavy equipment class also received their new dozer today. Next week, six students will be going to the Shasta Forestry Challenge to complete, complete, sorry, in the law, in a logging demonstration to learn about the logging industry. FSA will also be helping a Farm City Day next week. This is for fourth graders and is a workshop on branding lifestyle. Band. The band will be performing at the Cardigan Sweater Fondue Walk at Anderson River Park for Mr. Rogers Day at 9:00 AM on September 20th. The band has also been rehearsing every Monday night from 6:00 to 8:00 PM on the field for the homecoming halftime show. Club. A senior, Brody Lowery, started a book club. This club is for anyone who is a fan of books. The club will meet on Fridays during lunch in Miss Bradlin. The Chops Club is also up and running. They had their first practice last week. Other updates. Ms. Longnecker is taking students to Italy and Greece with E F Tours Summer of 2027. So they are starting up fundraising to get trips funded. Sophomores, juniors, and seniors get a chance to take the ASAB on October 1st to determine what jobs they qualify for in the military. Cub Connection started after school tutoring pods to help students improve both skills and grades in core classes. Trio is getting ready to take students to the Chico State Preview Day. Leadership. Leadership held A S B elections to decide their president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, activities advisor, spirit advisor, public, relations, officers, and class representatives. We, we hosted our first rally, we hosted our first rally, the Welcome Back Rally on September 5th. Students had a lot of fun playing mattress races, balloon toss rally, and a school-wide game of rock, paper, scissors. Mr. Stout almost won it all. All stout fall athletes were recognized and overall, it was a really fun time. Leadership is also working hard on making individual posters for the seniors of every sport. We also started up our birthday gram. For each week, we deliver a birthday gram with a sucker to students whose birthday is that week. We've also started our homecoming banners as well as planning details for our homecoming week. We are announcing our homecoming theme this Friday. The Homecoming Dance will be, will be Saturday, October 11th. Our Spirit Week will follow, and the Rally, Parade, and Homecoming Game will be on October 17th. The parade will start at 2:15 PM on Freeman and North Street, and the games start at 5:30 PM and 7:30 PM. We would love for you to come.
Are there any questions?
I have one, great job, thank you. So I know you can't tell me yet what the theme is gonna be, but can you tell me what you were choosing between? For homecoming?
Homecoming Dance. Um, I think our top two were disco theme and what was it? It was a good one. We had a Broadway week, we had Rio, like all around the world. We had to, we had to put these days on a float somehow.
Right.
That's the way I feel. Like you wanna do a day, but it can't just be a color, because
Right.
It has to be in a flow. Yeah, like Broadway, disco.
Euphoric was another one.
Oh, yeah.
What was it?
Euphoric.
Euphoric.
Decades, music. We had a few. Yeah, there were a few. Look at that one.
Well, I'm excited to hear what you came up with.
Is there any other questions?
You're doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you.
I know. I know. Right? Right?
Hello Board and Administration, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Jacob Garcia and I'm a junior at West Valley Early College High School. I'm speaking on behalf of Emmy Solzer, our ASC president, who cannot make it tonight. And I'm here tonight to provide an update of student life and activities at our school's West Valley. First, sports are in full swing. Last week, our varsity volleyball team took a trip down to San Rafael and Stanford University, touring the facility and watching the Stanford volleyball game. Following, they took selfies with the team. They have a stunning overall record of 12-4. The JV volleyball team is currently undefeated with two tournament championships. Even our freshman football team is undefeated as well. Our varsity football team is looking amazing with the 2-1 record. After their trip to Los Angeles in August, they are ready to take on their preseason teams. Football games are changing as well, without creating a new tradition, our walkout. Please come to one of our football games to come see us. And as our crazy crew grows due to our increasing enrollment, from 707 to 770 students, our leadership team is planning great things, including for our homecoming on October 17th. We are even planning our third Hero's Bowl on our first responders in the community. Next, FFA has had two monthly meetings, bringing together over 200 members. They will be attending and organizing the Farm City Event at the Shasta District Fairgrounds to teach young students about the importance of agriculture. Last year, we started our Eagle Vision Program, which consists of tutoring pods and fun activities for our students. This year, specifically on Friday of last week, we have 220 kids in attendance. We are hopeful and confident that this improves student success at West Valley. Lastly, we have amazing students representing and veteranizing our community from our very own West Valley. We have Derek Reelon, the FFA Superior Region President, representing FFA members from the Oregon border to Roseville. And myself, a student board member on the Shasta County Borders Education, representing the 26th School District in Shasta. At West Valley, we're ready and actively improving our school culture and we're excited to see where this REA amazing year takes us. Thank you, are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Abby Korea with North Valley High School. This year, we've made several exciting changes across our alternative education program. At North Valley, we've introduced a new curriculum for credit recovery through Bright Thinker and at Oakview, both general education and special education students are now using Bright Thinker as well. North Valley has also started a new virtual reality class for career exploration. With the VR headset, students can experience different career paths while also working through the career exploration curriculum. It has been a great way to explore opportunities for the future. Our after-school program is also up and running and we're looking forward to adding clubs and activities, including sports. Along with that, we are working toward offering attendance recovery at both North Valley and Community Day School through adult education. We're also consistently upholding our behavior matrix and holding students accountable for things like dress code, cell phone use, class disruptions and overall defiance. These expectations help create more of a positive learning environment for everyone. Finally, we are grateful to have two five-peak wellness coaches on our campus Monday through Thursday. They are here to support students when someone needs to talk to someone, whether that's for personal challenges, academic goals or having a safe place to process learning and behavior. Thank you for supporting our schools and the opportunities we have at St. Louis. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
4.1, public gearing to determine whether sufficient textbooks and instructional materials are provided for the 25, 26 school year to each student in mathematics, science, laboratory history, social science, foreign language, and the study of dialogue improvement in English language development component of the program consistent with the cycle content of the curriculum. Do I have any comments on 4.1? 4.2, the board will have comments from the public on agenda or non-agenda items.
Sorry, I didn't read my comments.
Don't worry, we'll share.
Good evening, my name is Cole Zupin and first I apologize for my attire, I just got out of football practice. But it's been my honor for the last year and a half to be that athletic director at West Valley High School. And we have a lot of growing costs with officials. And one of the ideas we came up with to kind of offset those costs is to host athletics golf tournament. So this is to benefit all sports at West Valley. It's gonna be the inaugural tee it up for the Birds Golf Tournament, October 5th at Wilcox. And I heard Mr. Parker might be a good golfer, so maybe he could
You're wrong.
Get a team together.
I can't.
Maybe with Mr. Booth. So we'd love to invite the board and any administration or anybody here in the public to join us. We're gonna have athletes there in uniforms and having meet and greets and we're gonna have a lunch there at Wilcox. So it's just gonna be an awesome day to build that bond with the community and have athletes be out there to represent West Valley and really excited about. So that's Sunday, October 5th. Any questions?
Public is?
So for a team of four, you get a lunch, a cart, 18 rounds and it's $125 a golfer, so $500 for a team of four. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any more public comments? Number five, ten items. Five one, minutes from the August 20th regular meeting. So five one, five two, five three, four, five five, five six, five seven, five eight. Does anybody want to remove any of those? Can send agenda?
I will, we approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five one through five eight, passes. Six one, there was no items removed from the consent agenda. Six two. Transportation cost reimbursement agreement with Shasta County Health and Human Services to provide transportation for foster youth students.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion six two passes. Six three, agreement with Cascade Union Elementary School District for students to attend math class at Anderson Union High School Campus.
That's always been a great program. A lot of students have used it over the years, I make a motion to approve.
The second. All in favor?
I have a question. On a memorandum of understanding, CUESD agrees to compensate AUHSC for instructional services in the amount, but then it says for other mutually agreed rate. So after we pass this MOU, you can come up with another mutually agreed.
If any more students are added, that would change. That's a motion, the students we have right now, we're getting that amount.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Six four, agreement with Cascade Union School District regarding student volunteers at Medellin and Anderson Heights Elementary School. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Six five, agreement with Shasta County Office of Ed to provide meals, this is to provide meals for the after-school program.
I wish Tom was here, I guess I could have asked him ahead of time. Um, I think I need to add stain on this one, but I don't, I don't know. Okay. Thank you, Joe.
The Jackies of Spain.
Well, when we call the vote, I was just gonna see if anyone had, but Joe confirmed it.
Shall I make a motion, we approve?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
A stain.
Board. Six six, review of Anderson Union High School Board Bylaw 9250 and Ed Code 35120 regarding board member compensation discussions or board member compensation. So we have a discussion and it can be action item also. So I'll just go ahead and start, I requested for this to be put on the agenda. Um, and it began with a personal experience of having to pay for childcare. And I started to think of other board members who may or may not come after me, who may not have the resources to pay for expenses to actually attend meetings. So I have a statement that I'd like to read regarding this. The California Education Code, Section 35120 explicitly commit school board trustees, referred to as governing board members, to receive compensation for their services with maximum monthly amounts scaled based on the district's average daily attendance from the prior school year. For example, in districts with over 60,000 ADA, trustees can receive up to 1,500 per month. Smaller districts with under 150 ADA are capped at $60 per month. The code also allows for appropriate pay for partial attendance, compensation for excused absences, for example, bonus, jury duty or district-related deeds. In annual increases of up to 5% on the current rate, this framework ensures compensation is regulated, charged to district funds and tied to actual participation, making it a structured benefit rather than an unlimited perk. Compensation school board trustees, compensating school board trustees under this provision is essential for several reasons. First, it helps attract a more diverse pool of qualified candidates who might otherwise be deterred by the significant time commitment, often involving evening meetings, policy reviews, community engagement, oversight of multimillion-dollar budgets without financial support. Many potential trustees, particularly from the working class, minority or younger demographics, cannot afford to serve voluntarily while balancing jobs or family responsibilities, leading to boards dominated by retirees or affluent individuals. By providing modest pay, districts can foster boards that better reflect their communities' racial, ethnic and socioeconomic diversity, ultimately leading to more equitable decision-making on issues like resource allocation and student support. Second, the compensation recognizes professional level responsibilities trustees carry, including accountability for educational outcomes, fiscal mismanagement and compliance with state laws. Duties that research links directly to improve school governance and student achievement. Unpaid service can result in higher turnover or less dedication, whereas paid positions encourage sustained competent leadership. For instance, in larger districts where the workload rivals a part-time job, the cap amounts under Section 35120 are reasonable, for example, $750 to $1,500 monthly, are reasonable incentives without string budgets. Finally, implementing compensation as allowed by the code promotes equity and accessibility in public service. It levels the playing field for non-wealthy candidates who might need to forego income or childcare to participate, ensuring that board service isn't limited to those with financial dependence. This not only enhances board talent and perspectives, but also aligns with broader goals of inclusive democracy in education. Districts can further tailor this through annual adjustments, keeping it responsive to inflation and unemployment while remaining fiscally responsible. And with that, I open it up for discussion.
I support compensation for the board members. Um, I think that for our district, it's $240 with a 5% increase that we can elect each year. Um, I understand that this, Joe, you had mentioned last time that was one of the first things that you got rid of and I understand that, that perspective. But I also do think that that value comes with paying somebody for something and it's not a lot of money. Um, it is a big responsibility, this packet was 521 pages. Um, I went through all of them. Um, I'm not saying I want money for it, but I just think that the quality you get when you're giving somebody something in return is increased, I think that's a common sense. A common sense thing. So I would support, I would support it.
Well, obviously Jackie put it in here, I'm totally in disagreement with this. People run for the school board, I believe that people should be running not for money, but to do good things for students and for teachers and for the public that they represent. I don't believe we should be paid at all. And I don't see why would we want to pay someone who's just going to come and sit. Now, if in fact this passes, which sounds like it could, I'm hoping we can put some sort of stipulations in this that before someone can get this money, they have to attend like three conferences in the area, training so they can become a good board member, they just can't come and sit and get a check. That they do some leadership abilities or meetings, do some things that is a reason to get paid for this. Uh, and so just granting someone money to come to a meeting to do a civic duty like we should be doing anyhow, I'm totally in disagreement, totally. And we got rid of it back then. Back then it was like $180 a month, board members were getting for health insurance, which we all wish we could get the $180 today for health insurance and we all know that doesn't happen. So I would, I'm totally against this and those are my reasons.
Chen, do we currently have any board members getting help sentences?
I also just want to point out, I looked into other districts that do receive compensation within our category. Um, one of them being, I think comparatively not an ADA, but they also fall within the category as our ADA, which would be that Shasta Union High School District. And then several other elementary school districts. So it's not out of the realm of, you know, what's currently happening in our county. But I will say, I've had to three times pay for childcare because my husband travels for work. So I'm literally paying to be here. So for me, that's not a win-win. So I'm literally paying to be here. So for me, that's not a win-win. I, I'm here not for the money. I'm here to make a difference and to serve. But when I'm having to use my own resources to be able to be here, in addition to doing the packet, visiting school sites and attending other meetings and trainings that we are required to, to attend, I, I think that puts a hardship on people. And people in our community who may be a single parent and have kids and they want a seat at the table. They want to have a voice in this district, don't have those types of resources. I think we're really narrowing the, the pool of people who are attracted to even participating in this position.
But I would say, you knew this would, would happen when you ran for the election. So that was your choice to become a board member, and I appreciate that. I think you're really good. But you should have, if this is causing you a financial problem, you should have thought of that first. Second off, this board voted to change the board meeting night to Wednesday and caused one of our employees to have to search for their own here at night, which they're not getting paid. They come at night, and it didn't seem to bother anybody for that. So I'm just saying, we're, all of a sudden we have a double standard. You remember the vote?
I do.
Okay.
I would say that that person has been paid salary. So, and yes, we did vote. And the context of that vote was because people want to attend the city council meeting as well. So it wasn't, it was not, it was not my item that was agendaized to request that change. It was somebody else in the community who was requesting that change. So people who want to actively participate in these kinds of discussions in the community should actively participate in the school board and the city council meetings. So, and we all voted on that. We all voted to, we all agreed.
Well, you know, most, no.
So, and yes, I did take this position knowing it was unpaid. And I don't think anybody taking this position actually realized how much work this is. I mean, this is a small packet. Five hundred pages is small. We've had packets over a thousand pages and we're given four to five days to read through it. If some, if, if people actually read through it, which I've heard in other districts, people don't actually read through their packet.
Or they share.
Or they delegate responsibilities. So I do take this job really seriously. I read through every single page. I call, ask questions. I visit different locations. We attended the ROP, Stacy and I did a site tour. There, there's, there's so much that we can do and participate in. But I believe in any, um, in any service that we provide, it, it should be a win-win. It should be, we should be attracting quality people to this position. I don't think people are gonna take this position just to sit here and attend a meeting. It's people who want to actually make a difference. But if we're not considering the fact that not giving a compensation for the services rendered, then we're, we're narrowing the pool. And I think that people, um, people shy away from these types of positions because it's a lot of work. And again, going back to my statement, it relegates this position to people who are more affluent or who are retired and have the time versus people who are active in our community. Uh, the students of this school are seventy-five percent low-income families. So if we want their families to have any participation in what we're doing here, or if they would like to have to stable, how are they even given the opportunity? If we're expecting them to use their own resources to find babysitting or to find the time to go to their board package, I just, I think it really, I think we would set ourselves up for a success in the district if we provide compensation.
So out of curiosity, I think there's about twenty-six districts in, in the area. How many districts did you actually survey?
Well, I looked through all of them, but it, it was, it was very tedious. I had to go through all of their bylaws and search it out.
How many districts actually pay?
Six.
Six, so, I mean.
Five elementary, one, and the only other high school district, which is Shasta Union High School District, which I think comparatively, their high school, our high school, we do a little bit more work than the average elementary school board.
So I totaled this, I think it was thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars for roughly?
Well, depends on what we agree to.
Oh, I'm saying you mentioned the maximum here twice, so I'm assuming you're trying to go for the maximum. So that would pay for four coaches. That would, I mean.
Well, if every board member doesn't have to take it, or you're just saying the max would be five times whatever we came up with, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So out of curiosity, does anyone here know, does, um, city council, I'm gonna do all our lesser magistrates, does city council get a stipend?
They do.
They do? So, city council, does county board of supervisors get a stipend? Yes, they do. You get a big, big check. Um, and then you can just go up there. So as far as civic duty goes, we're the only ones with, where legislatively we can, but we don't. So I, I think that's an important point to make with regards to civic duty.
Do you remember my comment?
Do we have any public comment on this?
Do you want, do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion to, um, approve a two hundred dollar per month compensation. So even if we have a special meeting, it's still two hundred dollars. If there's any other additional requirements that people want to add to that, whether it's, um, it already says here in, um, the Ed Code thirty-five-one-twenty that, um, we can also.
We can pay the student program too. Yeah.
That is an option.
Yeah, I read that in there.
Um, and we can do a pro-rated rate for if a board member is out ill or doesn't attend a meeting. We can add prorates on that. So if they've not attended a meeting, they don't get paid for that month, or we could add, depending on what situation that is, those are all things that we can include. But I make a motion for the monthly compensation to be two hundred dollars.
Do I have a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Motion passes three. Motion passes three to. Six seven, review of Anderson Union High School District's current parent and student opt-out code. Discussion and then action.
Where's Derek? Okay, that's okay. My light's blinking. I don't know if that means it's gonna go out soon or not. So I asked for this to be on here in light of a recent, um, Supreme Court of the United States ruling called Mahmoud v. Taylor. And in your packets, you see that that, that, um, the decision was included. It has the opinion, the dissent, um, as well in there. And basically, um, what that court ruling articulated very clearly, I'll read a part of it. So this is with regards to parents being able to opt out of things they find against their, their religion, religious or, or moral convictions. "The practice of educating one's children in one's religious beliefs, like all religious acts and practices, receives a generous, generous amount of protection from our Constitution. Drawing on enduring American tradition, we have long recognized that the rights of parents to direct the religious upbringing of their children, and it is not merely a right to teach religion in the confines of one's own home, rather it extends to the choices that parents wish to make for their children outside of the home." They also ruled that that supports introduction of LGBTQ+ inclusive storybooks along with decisions to withhold opt-outs places an unconstitutional burden on the parents' rights to the free exercise of their religion. "In the absence of an injunction, the parents will continue to be put to choice, either risk the child's exposure to burdensome instruction or pay substantial sums for alternative educational services. As we have explained, that choice unconstitutionally burdens the parent's religious exercise, and the loss of First Amendment freedom for even minimal periods of time is unquestionably constitutes irreparable injury." So with that, um, I would like to propose that we add to our California State Opt-Out Notice a box. So you guys, we already have that in our packet. Um, I would like to add, um, curriculum pertaining to gender, gender identity, gender expression, and LGBTQ-inclusive subjects. Um, so I would like to add that as a box to check. And then I would also like to do advanced notice of any curriculum pertaining to gender, gender identity, gender expression, or LGBTQ+ inclusive subjects. So whether or not parents did the opt-out, I still would like advanced notice. That's what I'm proposing today.
First law, Greg, can you please explain the advanced notice?
Sure. So if we have, um, if we have a, a teacher or a class, I mean, at this time, I'm not exactly sure what set curriculum we have for these topics. Um, but if it's something that was going to be added as an adjunct or conversation or lesson plan outside of maybe where it would usually be, which is would, would be in HIV, AIDS, or sexual education, that parents are given advanced notice. And that isn't, that is in the, um, in the court ruling as preventative to be converted some on the parents or their religious beliefs.
Any public comment? Any board member comments? Do you have that motion you made?
Um, do we have it on here as action? Oh, it's under discussion, action now. Um, I mean, I would like to hear from my fellow board members. I think we did the right thing when we passed this opt-out to begin with. Um, I think this item needed to be in there, but because of, we were waiting for these things to go through the court, and now they have. And so I think that, um, we need to add it to make it more complete, especially in California.
I would like to see it all written before I vote on it.
Okay, yeah.
Do you want it to be two separate boxes? Or do you want it to say early opt-out or opt-out completely for one line?
Um, so the, the way, the, the way the opt-out already is, the box is, you know, attending or participating in this, participating in surveys. So then I would just add a box, curriculum pertaining to. Um, but I can, yeah, Joe, absolutely. We can have that typed up so you could see exactly what it would look like. I mean, I could just tell you.
We can amend the form, bring it back on October agenda.
Okay. Any other board comments? Okay, thank you.
Wait, it dies? What do you mean it dies?
Vote on it, so the next meeting.
So I'll bring it back next month.
Motion table.
Okay, thank you.
So do we want to take a vote on it, or is it just a discussion?
Well, one member said he wouldn't until he saw it physically, but no one else chimed in, so I don't know. I would motion to approve. I think I'd like to see the draft first.
So did you make a motion to table it?
Is that what you said?
Uh, did you make that?
I'll second the table.
I'll motion table it. You second it?
Yeah.
Okay. So, motion to table it.
But I want to make sure it's on our agenda next month. Thank you.
Since you had a motion, I'm expecting the table. You can vote on it.
So, I vote?
Yes.
Aye.
Just two.
Yes. We know what we're doing.
Teacher, we got this. One-on-one.
So we'll table it and put it on the agenda next month.
Thank you, Madam President.
Do we have public comment on that? Six eight, review of Anderson Union High School District's current caregiver's authorization affidavit.
So this was in our meeting last month, and I just wanted to get some more clarification on this. Um, last month I asked, do we have to have this caregiver's authorization affidavit? Meaning, now I understand more of the reasoning behind it to enroll. Um, but do we just have to have a form, or does it have to be this form, is what I'm asking? And can we, can we edit this ourselves or, or not?
I believe this is in Ed Code.
Right.
And they're trying to amend the form now, so I never did sign it yet. But is, this is in Ed Code, so I think we have to have it the way it is. I can, I'll double check though.
Yeah, okay. So if we do have to keep it the way it is though, my, my second question would be, can we add policy or AR to it so that there's very specific people handling these caregiver authorizations? I know the new one is gonna release us from any liability for not checking any information. Can we still do that? Um, those are, those are kind of my questions. I know it's on the governor's desk, so we don't have to do anything tonight, but I would like to have that information come next month. Does that make sense, my question? Like, do we have to have the form as is, or just a mechanism to enroll someone without?
I believe the form is in Ed Code.
Okay.
The way it is now.
Okay.
And they're, they're trying to amend the current form.
Right.
So we are required to have it. Um, so your question is, can we add a, a policy to kind of set some protocol on how we administer this form?
Correct, because the, the new form, does the new proposed form from AB four-nine-five says that we are not obligated to confirm the information on there and that we are released from liability if we don't. But can't we set something that says this is actually how we process these forms?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
We could do that. Like currently, we still go to the areas contacts.
Right.
And the primary contact, secondary contact, emergency contact. We're gonna call everybody on that list first.
Right. Okay. How many of these do we process a year?
I have the information.
Thank you.
Uh, currently West Valley has seven, Anderson High School has two, Altid has two, and New Tech has six.
So what's that total?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. So really, that's not a lot spread out over those sites if we needed to, or if we can, add some type of, of governing policy to this form. Doesn't seem like that would be burdensome for administration. Okay, thank you.
So next month, we'll bring that back?
Yeah, just for clarification, so I give my homework. So we're not sure if the new form should be. It was on his desk.
Right.
Because it's, the session closed already. He has thirty days to either sign it or ignore it. But even if it doesn't pass, we have the current one, we've had forever since I've been here. You guys want to have some kind of verbiage of how we administer this? You want to bring that verbiage back next month? Like, maybe, yeah, to L U, you can move some language?
Yeah.
Okay.
Six nine, counseling services for general education students. This is what I wanted to discuss with principals, what, last year we voted to. What, last year, we voted to not continue counseling services for the general population of our students. North Valley does the Five Peaks. So I wanted to look at different counseling services, the need, if the principals think there's a need, circumstances that would arise that they do need it. I personally think that the kids, there's a need for counseling services for different reasons. And so I wanted to bring that open for discussion. That what the public thinks, the teachers, the admin. Like Tom, do you guys, do you miss having counselors available, counseling services? We eliminated all your counseling services.
There are times where, where counseling services are definitely, that was pretty reshared for us. There are times when they, you know, students can benefit from it. You know, we do the best we can with the people that we have on staff, just maybe they're not, you know, qualified is what you would hopefully sort of characterize.
Sorry, I put you on the spot.
Do you want me to speak it all about people? We really loved it, and it's been really helpful for our students because there's times when students don't go along with teachers for any number of reasons, and we call them in and we have a discussion of, okay, you clearly don't get along with Mr. Don, so how can we put this into a teaching moment? How can we help you so that the next day, we don't have to blow up? And it's helping us to make sure that we reduce our suspensions so that we're not having those over the topic years because no one took a second to talk about why that happened.
Are you having those conversations with the students or with the counselor?
Sometimes both. Sometimes I'm saying they're having the conversation and the counselor at the same time.
And I can just interject really quickly. I think we need to be careful when we throw the word counselor around because the risk of iatrogenesis when kids are being terrified by a person is, is very high. And so we need to make sure if it's a wellness coach, let's say wellness coach. If it's an intern, let's say a psych program intern. If it's a full-on counselor, let's say MFT or whatever they are, I would just like that for clarification.
So what's the difference between when I see the gentleman that you have actually has a wellness coach? This is my ignorance here. So he has graduate studies in education and, but personal trainer education. What's the difference between a wellness coach and a counselor? I guess is my question.
That's a good question. That's beyond me. He was actually a teacher in New Jersey, and he came over here, he became a wellness coach, and he has several different certifications. But I know under Five Peaks specifically, he's only acting as a wellness coach.
So do they have counselors also?
I don't believe so.
So did Dunham's have counselors and wellness coaches and psychologists or to date?
There's where licensed MFTs.
Yeah, I think Dunham's has some MFTs. When I talked to the director of Five Peaks here today, and he said that they have wellness coaches. To answer your question, I have a little bit of a counselor and wellness coach, but I'll find out for you.
You, Jackie?
Generally speaking, a counselor would be somebody that is licensed and has, carries the liability for iatrogenesis, which is to introduce harm through counseling. So they have, you know, a much more robust set of coverages liability-wise and training-wise. I don't believe that wellness coaches carry that risk of that disclosure. And I'm not saying that they don't have value, I, I just think it depends on what we need them for.
They're typically certificated.
Versus licensed, correct? Right.
I was going to recommend the resource study that you sent over, Brian, that we have something like that readily available to all of our school sites and maybe even have that on our website as well. So families and staff know where they can get resources. So we need to be directing people to the resources, to what's already out there. And you said that Five Peaks was willing to, to offer a counselor or a wellness coach?
Wellness coach.
And then the other question is, like, for example, you know, if we have a student who is at Anderson, New Tech, or West Valley, or Anderson High, and they are, you know, repeat offenders with, you know, behavioral issues, are we, I mean, how many chances do they get before they're recommended to go to North Valley?
Oh, Mr. Rick, we need to discuss their site-sacring protocols.
Yeah, we have a flow chart that we meet once a month and go over every single student that has a discipline issue and where they are on the chart. And we have, we got to check a lot of boxes before we want to send them down the hill. We use Mr. Rick, or we had in the past, we're waiting for that approval. We do assign some students to Mr. Rick, but that's more for self-harm with drugs and alcohol or nicotine, trying to get them to make better choices there. That's not the same type of counseling everyone is. I don't think that's the counseling everyone is discussing.
Well, that brings up a question because we do have the agreement for Youth Violence Prevention Council or Youth Options Act Shasta with Mr. Rick. And so I wasn't sure with the services that he's providing to Anderson High three times a week and then West Valley once a week, which is going to be more for nicotine and?
We, it's part of the cessation program so that we try not to immediately go to, like, North Valley. We're going to go to training. I don't, at West Valley, we, we give them a training module that's online and free Mr. Rick's for like their first nicotine in an attempt to get them to change their behavior before we go immediate suspension down the road. And obviously, parent contact is in the very first one as well.
So is someone like Mr. Rick, is he like a certified wellness coach through?
Mr. Rick has been there since Mr. Booth was the assistant principal.
So he, he's a behavior intervention specialist. In other words, depending on, you know, he, he has a wide range, he's been doing it for a long time. So he has obviously a lot of different experience, but then different trainings that he's gone through over the years. So part of that with cessation, both sites do use him in that, that respect. We've used him for, for speaking to students on a level that they, they understand in terms of responsibility, safe responsibility for their actions, whether it's, you know, getting to class on time, getting to school every day, then looking at, at grades and, and even participating in class like they should.
So I noticed on here, so the agreements are different. We have Mr. Rick scheduled for three times a week and one time a week, one time a week at West Valley. But I, when I saw this discussion on our agenda and then I read through the packet, I thought, why, if he's somebody that the kids love and respect and have built relationships with over time, you know, in each school site, why would we use him at, or could we use him as, you know, kind of someone who the kids feel safe with? Like if a kid is, you know, having a hard day, doesn't want to go to class, or just behaviorally having some issues versus them sitting in your office, attendance office or something like that, would Mr. Rick be available to sit with the student, kind of talk with them, kind of help them work through their anger? If we could get them to go back to class, is that something that he does?
So he's scheduled in a lot of different locations. So depending on what his schedule is from year to year, how we contract him, if we contract him early enough, those are variables that are going to dictate your question. For us, I would say that, yeah, he is somebody that our students really like and want to spend time with. We don't, we ran into the problem during school that they want to go see Mr. Rick. So, you know, and sometimes, sometimes that's good, but we want them to see Mr. Rick after school.
Do you think he would be adequate to fill this gap? That we're discussing, like, not having counseling for general population? Is he an adequate fix for this gap that we are?
Yeah, I guess trying to define what, what the gap is, I mean, talking about students that, that, they don't, I don't know, they don't need, maybe, they need somebody that's just going to sit down with them, be like grandpa, tell them truth, and get them on the right path, and they're able to, to respond to that. So that's, that's kind of students that everyone talks about.
That's the Mr. Rick type student.
That's the Mr. Rick. Okay. Because that's what I'm thinking, like, when Jackie's talking about, like, we don't want to over-therapist their, like, did I say it now? We, you know, like, sometimes I, I feel like as a kid coming from, you know, high ages myself, it's like, sometimes you just need someone to sit with, not necessarily to, you know, do therapy with you, but just to really sit with you in your grief or whatever it is that you're going through. You know, if your parents are in a home, your parents die of cancer, or you're having, you know, insecurities in other areas, sometimes it's like they don't always need to, they're having a bad day, they don't always want to talk about their problems, sometimes they're just looking for that person to just sit there with them and, you know, look a grandpa like, just kind of giving them some wisdom, but not necessarily like telling them that this is how you should solve your problems. You know what I mean? Like, I think kids are lacking a relationship with adults that they trust. And if Mr. Rick is somebody that they trust, then maybe we should kind of leverage the relationships that he's already built within this community and the contract that we have open here to vote on. And if he has availability, then would we be able to tap into that and kind of build it out that way?
So I'm curious, is this, this is probably on direction from each site as to why it's different, how we're utilizing Mr. Rick? Is it more of just the difference of your needs and what you guys want as administrators? Or is it a availability thing? Because West Valley, we're just using him for nicotine and substance abuse. But Anderson, like we've already said, we're using it for a lot more areas of focus. Is there a reason that we're not doing the other areas of focus at West Valley?
No.
Would you be open to that?
Yeah, I, I think that kind of, my only concern is I think the, the gap that we're talking about isn't a Mr. Rick type of student.
Okay, got it.
But I would love to have Mr. Rick more, especially as the year goes.
Right.
Things, things seem to build in the world of discipline.
Right.
Because we use a progressive discipline model, things grow. So the first time, it's call home, no big deal. And then every single incident builds, so, you know, we don't need Mr. Rick as much first month. But as the year went, that would be great to have more, you know.
And, and like you were saying, it might not quite meet that gap that you're envisioning now, but maybe having it there proactively and preventatively for the next year.
And, you know, we have a school psych now. Katie's doing a great job. So we, we have done things to kind of help in that area, so.
Mr. Bixby, could you just give us an example of the type of students that?
Yeah, the type of student I'm talking about doesn't have parents for us to send that resource to us home to.
Right.
And there's a decent amount of those. When you said the caregivers will, when you said West Valley has seven, that, that's speaking to something. And I don't, I don't know exactly what that, what that problem is, but we do have some students that are either couch surfing, have lost parents, parents are terminally ill, we have a few of those, which is heartbreaking. And Ms. Adams is there, student falling, couldn't get her to class, everyone took a turn. But we don't have the resources to have my assistant principal walk her to class two times a day, literally bribing her with food, you know, meeting her before school. It, it's a lot for, and so there is a small, and I don't think it needs to be like we had. I don't think it needs to be post-COVID. I, I'm, I think that that was overkill and everyone wanted to see a counselor. But I do think there is a really niche group that, that could use some coping skills that I don't believe Mr. Rick is trained to hand out. That's my personal opinion from being the assistant principal for four and a half years. And so, you know, but whatever we get, we're going to work with it.
Thank you, Jackie. Brian, you mentioned Five Peaks was willing to, to offer us a wellness coach for free?
Correct. My, my call, the director of Five Peaks, she takes you had the idea of possibly having one or two counselors at North Valley be available to go to West Valley or Anderson or New Tech in case of an emergency. And he said, well, I might have a better solution, I might be able to offer you guys a wellness coach free of charge, do as grandpap you receive.
Would that coach flow through all the sites or would they be like dedicated to one site?
He may as well, if you have one at New Tech, one at Anderson, one at West Valley. Not positive though. He may as well like to give multiple people available. And you call them certified wellness coaches. So I have my notes to find out what that means, you know, because our school counselors are certified, but they're not MFT, marriage, family therapists. So they're different levels of certification. So I want to find out what a certified wellness coach is.
We don't want interns. We don't want interns, sorry. It's a new field, I'm just saying, there's a lot of interns in wellness coaching right now.
Yeah, you can find out what that looks like if you want to.
We'll do.
Maybe you, you offer us to be a member of the firm or you, after all this discussion?
What are your needs, Eleanor? I have no idea.
We have a large number of students that come to us because they are not successful in a, in a large environment. They have a lot of anxiety and stress, a lot of students with Bible fours, documented disabilities because of just not being able to function well. And so, you know, if there was ever something like that that was free, it would be amazing to teach those skills, you know, and the coping skills, to be able to do that. We, we don't have the same resources because our ADA is smaller and, you know, so I had mentioned before that we refer to care courts to be able to like access Mr. Rick in that way. So it's, you know, just a different avenue. So that's our alternative to suspension. But with, with the number of anxiety we also have, it seems like a certain amount of students right now that are having serious mental health crises. And so I just, we do the best we can with like an exit plan from a facility on how we can support what that looks like, you know, and move forward in that way. And when we are smaller, so we can see more and, you know, listen and work with parents. And we, we meet with families a lot. So I just always worried that there's, you know, something in there that we should be doing that for or not, or that, you know, ways to help folks. But that's kind of what we see more of, is just those folks that have like, you know, hidden from school and, or tried all different schools because they just, they don't know how to, you know, simplistic ways, how to do hard things sometimes, but also just how to deal with their own issues.
And I, and I think, Eleanor, you touched, you reminded me of something on, on this item that I wanted to make sure I said. And that is that it is, I in no way think that kids are not struggling. But I think that first, first, what kids want is boundaries and clear expectations and adults to follow through on what they set those expectations were and what those boundaries are. So if we're going to say no cell phones in classes, there's no cell phones in classes. If we're going to say there's no vaping in the bathroom, there's no vaping in the bathroom. There's no reason, there's no reason, don't say it if we're not going to do it. But I hear differently from the community. I hear differently from parents and I hear differently from students. But things that are going on on campuses where I check and I say, well, that's the rule. So, so I just want to say, I'm not saying we don't need more, but I think so I just want to say, I'm not saying we don't need more, but I think that's a really good place to remind us to start with that, with those boundaries. And sometimes I feel like in today's society, we've almost become overly empathetic, I kind of coined the phrase toxic empathy, where we're placating and we're removing boundaries because we feel bad. And I see that that honestly, in general, is the opposite of what kids need. They're here, we have academic studies, we have academic goals, and sometimes just raising that bar is helping them to focus on those things by the adults around them keeping them accountable all the time. I think that that anxiety just naturally lessens at least while they're at school, right? Because it's clear, at home maybe they don't have boundaries, they don't have, they don't know where their next, they don't know those things. But at least when they walk into our district and our school site, they know. That's, that's my defense.
I think that's really valid, just to add one more thing, but you will see behaviors despite for those students that don't have the resources before vacations, because they know that they're gonna lose that.
Right.
And so, um, you know, just any opportunity to teach students how to deal with that kind of thing is always very.
Ms. Heisler, you brought up anxiety, and it made me go back to think about that book, The Anxious Generation. I've been telling everybody about the sugary. And it reminded me of a conversation I had with another board member from Chester Union High School District. And she was saying they, they bought the, are they Yoder, Yoder pouches?
Yonder.
Yonder, the Yonder pouches for their Pioneer site. And she says that, yeah, you guys have those too, but she was, she was telling me that their board has been discussing getting rid of cell phones completely for you using like the Yonder pouches, because they tested them in their Pioneer site and their academics went up eighty-five percent. And so, and mental health increased, academics increased. So, we started having this conversation, I'm telling her about the Anxious Generation book, and, and, you know, a, a lot of like the, the issues that I saw when I went to North Valley last year was students who were, you know, on social media or texting during school days, during, whether it was break or lunch, I don't know if they were texting during school time or during class time. But that was where a lot of fights and arguments were stemming from, was from cellphone usage. And that was prior to arriving, but, you know, it just makes me wonder, if we've kind of cracked down with cell phones in a more serious fashion, could we possibly, you know, reduce anxiety, reduce fights, reduce contention on our campuses, could we potentially increase our academics? The whole premise of, of The Anxious Generation talks about one school site who completely banned cell phones from, you know, being on campus or from being used and just to, to do an experiment within the same district, like one school gets to keep them and one school, you know, doesn't get to use their cell phones, and to see if academic outcomes change. So I'm curious if our district will even be open to something like that, to see if.
Julia, I know that us three are super strict. There's no, Mrs. Heimerson and I do sweeps. And if the teachers, if, and, and we know, we've, we're starting to figure out which teachers, you know, need a reminder that we're all on the same team, because it makes the other teachers look like the bad guys.
Right.
But, but West Valley and Anderson and New Tech, we're super strict. So that's just, I just want to let you know, like, there's no cell phones in classes at West Valley, and if there are, there's some pretty serious conversations going on, we're not, and I know Anderson's the same way because we want it to be. And they already had the Yonder, so they're, they're, they're good, but we are really strict.
Do you guys have the students put them in like a?
Nope.
A pouch or?
No, because I think you were told not to do it, don't do it. And, you know, you're gonna have that phone your whole life, you shouldn't have it out when you're driving either.
Yeah.
And, and, and rules, I don't think.
We're, we're sorry, I missed this topic and now we're switching topics.
Yeah.
So if we can get, kind of pull back in on the topic of counseling services, I need to see some directions. Do you want me to find out where Wellness Coach is, contact the director of Five Peaks, what direction do you guys want it?
I think find out if they have what the certification is, and if, how many we could get, if we could get one for each site, and if they would be certified for each site.
Okay, I'll bring that back in a second.
Also just, um, keep it open as another option to that, if that doesn't go through, maybe adding days for Mr. Rick at West Valley for general services, not just nicotine and substance abuse.
And just to reach out to him if he could be available.
And if any of you want to see one of the Five Peaks counselors next, and you're willing to come to the site, they do it all day long.
They're wellness coaches.
Wellness, sorry, wellness coaches, thank you, thank you, thank you for all your feedback.
Six twelve, resolution regarding sufficiency of instructional material for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Six ten, sorry.
I believe we approved that resolution that we just had opened, mentioned earlier. What we commented was a lot earlier on, that's what that's about.
Yes, my second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion passes, five zero. Six eleven, career tech, C tech, application for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for Anderson Union High School District. Mr. Booth and Mr. Whitmore participated in writing this.
Mr. Whitmore was phenomenal resource.
Pretty good, yeah, he's pretty good. Kind of a jack of all trades.
And as you have to be, if you're not, you don't have a job.
I believe we approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six eleven passes. Six twelve, agreement for the college career access pathway partnership, dual enrollment with Shasta College. The move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes, five zero. Six thirteen, agreement for college career access pathway partnership, dual enrollment with U College.
Let's move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, five zero. Six fourteen, agreement with Hart Springs School for purpose of providing special ed-related services to students with exceptional needs. Mr. Parker, this is something you said that we.
This is special, is there a mention, you want to address it?
Yes, we have a student that is standing at Hart Springs at this time. This is the master contract that governs that, at that school. And Hart Springs is in Wichita, Kansas. Yes, it was a process going through this to get to this. By ECA, there's law that we have to look within California first for RTC programs, because we knew the need was there for the student. With the three that we reached out to, rejected the student, would not take him. And Hart, when we, so then we started looking, there was actually two in New York that we sent his packet to, and then this one in Kansas, and Hart Springs was able to take him in Kansas. Working with the parent, with Sopa, through the process for the student to go there.
So I looked very closely, I could not see the exact cost they were charging us. Yes, it was not in that master contract, and I reached out to them for that update, and I just got it today, what the cost is. They have a breakdown for all their services. So, right now, it's gonna be forty-one thousand dollars a month. Forty-one thousand a month? That is correct. And do we have anybody that helps us pay this? Sopa does come in and help us pay this, because the student is an out-of-home placement. And so, all of his, uh, room, where he's staying, the, the living side of it, that is covered by Sopa at a hundred percent reimbursement. And then on the tuition side, thirty-five percent is covered by Sopa. So, of that forty-one thousand, the district has to pay about thirteen thousand.
For a month.
A month, correct. What other choices do we have besides this program?
We didn't have any, that's the thing, the three in California wouldn't take him, there was no facility, no school here in the North State that could take him. We cannot provide the services that this young man needs. And Hart Springs was the only one that offered to take him and could provide the services.
This family is a resident of Anderson District?
Yes, they are.
And have been for a while.
Yes, they have, they have siblings at the middle school, and they have a sibling that's in the eighth grade, he'll be with us next year. I think there's an older sibling that graduated from Anderson already, and the mom is a graduate of Anderson, Heisler. Back when Mr. Booth was assistant principal.
Yeah, so we pay twelve months a year or nine months a year?
Twelve months a year, because he's there full-time.
So do we pay for the parents to go visit them?
Yes, there is a contract with Sopa that is reimbursable from Sopa, but we have to front the money to the parents, we do cover, cover two visits per, per school year for the parents to visit their child.
So how many students are in this situation in the county with Sopa?
Six.
And I used to be the chair of Sopa, but they don't have those kind of resources.
Uh, they actually do, we, the O O H funding has been in a reserve, we've been getting annual funding at Sopa, and this is the highest we've ever been with the, the number of students in, in out-of-home placement. So in years past, it's been significantly lower, so we, Sopa has held on to that money just for this situation. There's a two million dollar reserve at Sopa for this.
So.
And I know that, because I just went to fact on Monday, and that was a topic of discussion.
This one for a couple of years, this might be kind of rough on the reserves.
It can be, yes. The goal though, I'll be working with Hart Springs for, I had a, a, a conversation with their school psychologist and the teacher outside of the I E P meeting that we were in, and I just point blank asked them how long you think he'll be there, and they think in a year, they can get it to a point where he can come back to district. So that's our goal, that's what we're shooting for. This was not, I want you to know, this was not half-heartedly, or it was a long process, and it's a very serious decision to go this direction, and we wouldn't do it unless we absolutely had to.
Are you done, Joe? Because I have a question. Okay, thank you. Yes, I answered his, his con, his questions and you answered them. But I do have a question about our liability insurance for it. And I'm sorry, Brian, but I don't know how to tell you where it is, except it's on page three thirty-nine of my packet. It's in part two, insurance requirements for non-public schools affiliated with residential treatment program, treatment facility. Commercial general liability, three million per occurrence, six million in general aggregate, and then it goes on under that item to say that our insurance is secondary to theirs, which means that they're, they have enough coverage to cover primary, right? But then it goes on, that's just for commercial general liability, then it goes on to workers' comp, commercial auto fidelity, professional sexual molestation and abuse coverage, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm just making sure we're secondary on all of those, not just the general liability. That, that was my own and only clarification.
I'll do the research and find out. I know that Sopa has the Hart Springs, because we have had a student there in the past. And so I know Dr. Patz with Sopa is very familiar with Hart Springs contracts, and I'm sure he can answer that question for me, so I will, I'll bring that answer back to you.
Yes, so just to clarify, my question is that we are secondary on every policy and liability, not just general, not commercial general. Thank you.
Yep.
Do I have a motion to approve? Six point one four, motion to approve.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Six fourteen passes. Five zero. Six fifteen, agreement with youth violence prevention council, provide counseling and education services for students at West Valley, early college high school. So just added, my question on this one is, why does West Valley just have the one day and Anderson has the others? Is it because of the tobacco taxation grant, difference in funds?
I think what the principal said earlier, when he was available, we booked him earlier. When I was principal here, we tried getting him one day a week, because you've booked at one hundred percent. He works all the rest of the county.
So it's just. Who booked him first?
Yeah, well, and it's, we've always just had him one day ever since I've been there, and previously we had other services, so I felt like we're kind of overloaded with services for a while. So, now that things have changed, more time I go, or if we get the wellness coach, then that would make that all, especially if the wellness coach is free, that, I like, I like adults that are free.
I just wasn't sure if it was because of the funding part of it, because I thought he was paid for the funding, that's why I wasn't sure.
I believe we approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion passes.
Stacy, we're gonna find out, we'll paint that with.
Okay. Then we're gonna find out if he has, Dustin, you're gonna find out if he has more days available?
Yeah.
Six sixteen, agreements with youth violence prevention council for students at Anderson Union High School District. Anderson Union High School. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero. Six seventeen, agreement with Columbia Elementary School District for leading learning network services.
I actually have a question on this. So this is only one sheet, it seems really vague of services that are being paid for, like, I wasn't sure, I was a little off the exchanges.
So I'm gonna let Mrs. Heisler address this, because it changes, New Tech High School only.
So she works with really, with a lot of charter schools in the area, and as, as well as just small schools, but in, in particular, a lot of feeder schools for me. And, and so it's the opportunity to be able to, to meet and discuss, she shares some of the charter law as it's coming about, so that we're aware, and being able to, so it just, um, as things come up and she's available, they, they pulled in and done different grants together, nothing that I've been a part of, but that's the kind of opportunity there is, because there are so many small charter schools that are, are partners, that they can pull together and have just better opportunities.
So it's just a flat fee of eleven thirty-one?
Correct.
This goes until June, or this equitable school year?
Yeah.
And then you'll attend along with other charter schools, monthly meetings? Have you already been receiving those services?
I, I, um, I have, and I have been able to, shares great resources to be able to access like drives and templates, it's where I got the information, it was before you guys got that started, but we had to create a, an addendum when we had an eighth grade, and so she was able to give me information and some other sites to use, just to be able to, to support what I was trying to do there.
This is more or less a, a support for you to know how to navigate mobile charter school?
Yes.
Stuff, yeah, okay, okay, thank you for explaining that.
Oh, yeah.
All motion to approve?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Four zero. Six eighteen, Anderson New. Six eighteen, Anderson New Tech Opportunity Project with Green Prince for the future. Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, four zero. Six nineteen, discussion on expanding career tech, CTE course offer, course offering. We added, our last one we added was the building construction class. And Mr. Parker says that Revlop has twenty units they require for CTE to graduate, so we discussed that. I think after our last discussion, career tech, CTE is the way to go. Julie and I toured the ROP center, talking to people in the public. They're really interested in our trades, whether it's ROP or other classes we do. I think Mr. Booth went and looked at the Vet Tech program that they have at Summit. I know Foot Hill, our competitor, has a fire station for their ROP. Our ROP fires limited for space. They would love to have a tower that they could practice getting on and off the roof. Something more hands-on, so it'd be great if we could expand that somehow. The auto, um, auto repair is huge and they can fully like that. It'd be great if we could expand that. There's a lot that, for ROP, that we could expand on. So I don't just think it's, I don't want to get rid of ROP either. I think CTE, we need to increase it more than anything. Um, I would like to start out by doing a survey to students to see what they want. What are they interested in? What things do they want? You know, what, what classes would they like to have if they, what do they see doing? What's something they haven't done? So something like that, I think would be a great way to start, if they're interested.
Right. So Mr. Booth, I think that, by the way, it's called Vet Assistant, not Vet Tech. We got, we got chastised for calling it Vet Tech. Even Foot Hill's the Vet Assistant Program.
Oh, no.
So, um, yeah, I, I agree. I think we're gonna get lots of offerings to kids. But right now, our electric sizes are, are small. We had, we've had a van, we've had a feeder drop-in, we've had a building construction tree, we had another one. I know we build it to come, but until they come, though, our class sizes are gonna be small, and we're still paying those salaries. Keep that in mind. You mentioned that we don't, the ROP does not have a fire tower, a tower that can pump and stuff?
Yeah, they want a building that they can actually have the ladder on to go up and down and do real life.
I do know that, um, the, the Fire Academy kids in the ROP program receive many more certifications than Foot Hill does. It's actually a better program. I'm gonna reach out to Mr. Hopper. I have some connections to the US Forest Service, fire some smokejumpers. Maybe we can partner with them and those ROP students could maybe take a field trip out to the US Forest Service and use their tower.
So I, I think it's very important we realize that every student that goes to the high school has certain requirements they have to make by state law to graduate. So we've got to be careful that we leave those classes that cover those requirements there. Because there's only so many out here they can take in addition to the required classes. So we've got to be careful we don't give them way too many choices, because then the class sizes are gonna drop. And then we're gonna get over our heads in salaries and not really accomplish what we need to. So I agree with you. Let's do a survey, see what people want, and then we can determine what's there and what we can do. Because it just isn't, well, I ask for more classes, it just doesn't work that way. I just, just to add a little bit today, I mean, because we're experiencing that with some of our, some of our newer, uh, CTE programs already. And so getting them, uh, we only have so many kids needing those requirements. They only have one elective, their freshman year, sophomore year, and then it kind of branches out after that. But there's only a pool so big to draw from. I do, uh, want to express my, my thanks to Stephen for helping me. One of the great things about doing like, things like the Ag Instead of Grant or the, the CTIG, uh, grant itself is just to look at the, uh, the awesome program that we do have for kids with CTE. When I say CTE and I'm talking CTIG, I'm, I'm talking to all of it, ROP, plus what we have on campus. With that intensive program, that, that big of a program for our schools. That's over twenty dual enrollment or articulated courses that students are, are, are getting, um, college credits for. That is over forty-plus certificates that they're pulling from those different, uh, different courses. And to learn that was, was, thank you. I appreciate it. And so, uh, they're doing a great job. I think this last, we're, we're wrapping up the end of year reporting from last year. I'll, I'll say that, uh, we, we have shot through the roof when it comes to CTE completers for this district. I'm gonna say we're around fifty, fifty-something the prior year, this, this year. We're over two hundred, knocking on like two hundred and thirty to two hundred and sixty CTE completers. That's amazing. And in large part, it's going to that two, two-course sequence. But, uh, some great things happening, that's for sure.
And we think it's gonna go up. Last year, Mr. Booth, the counselor did a lot of work to clean up our data.
Right.
We had some students who were technically bigger, but we, it wasn't required properly. So we think we're gonna make another game this year, too.
I will just add that visiting the website with Mr. Hopper and Mr. Booth. We have the conversation about how can we, you know, attract kids and increase our ADA. Ultimately, that's what we want, is our ADA to increase. And a lot of students who are in the Anderson District, they're residing in the Anderson District, are going to Foot Hill for some of these pathways, like the Vet and Assistant. So I think if we are able to offer some kind of comparables to the school that we're losing our ADA to, that, and that we market it really well. That was a whole other conversation, how we are, um, making the public aware and marketing what we're offering to the community, to our students. That hopefully we can form more new students in the coming years.
Stephen, do you want to comment about your ideas?
Well, so, you know, Stacy and I would have practiced earlier in the week, you know, talk about CTIG and CTE and stuff like that. And, you know, we, we've already talked, ROP is a great program, and they've got room where they want to do some expansions and, you know, and make some additions to their stuff. And there's stuff that we can, can add to our site, so I'll tell you, the way you get kids is you gotta have shiny stuff.
Yeah.
They, they want to see if that's what gets the parents to, to come. And so, um, you know, really looking at a district and, and highlighting what we already have, you know? Mr. Booth already talked about it, and that really starts on social media, getting that social media out. You know, I'll tell you, I told Stacy this, I said, I am not a social media person. I take pictures all the time, but they hardly ever get posted. I have millions of pictures of kids doing stuff with the phone. It's just not my wheelhouse. I'm not a fan of social media. And so, but that's, that's the driving factor of, of things, getting the news here on campus a lot more often for positive reasons and, and what our kids are doing and, and our classes. You know, you, you guys have talked about the Vet Tech or the Vet Assistant Program. I, I've talked with Jen, that is our next K-12 grant that, that we'll be working on and pioneering towards and, and adding some of that. And with that, the nice thing is you can write in the salary of a teacher for the first three years. And then in the hopes of that, through getting that information out there, you know, you start attracting students towards, towards the program. And really working with Anderson, you know, Vet, some of those folks, and taking over part of our empty classrooms here on campus and building a, a small veterinary facility. So it's a real experience for students to, to see. Really highlighting, too, looking for more grant opportunities. And, and that might be adding someone in the district to, their whole job is, is grant finding and grant writing, even if it's just part-time position in that site. There's a ton of grants out there. I've written a couple of them. They take a long time, you know? We, we talk about doing things on our, our off time. I sit down and I write a lot of grants and read a lot of grants and, and try to find ways to find more money. More so for my program, because, you know, self-serving, but, but also working as, you know, with CTE now. We had a meeting last week with all the CTE at Anderson anyways, and, and working with those staff members to come up with ideas and lists of what they want in their programs. And then I provided them with some of the grant opportunities that are available for them, and then offered services to help, you know, write those grants and, and move forward. But we've just got to highlight what we've got, and, and I think the survey is a great start with getting students what their interests are. Because there's no point in building a program if kids aren't interested in taking it.
I did, I did learn, and correct me if I'm wrong, Scott. The teacher at Northern Summer, who teaches the Vet Assistant Program, has an agricultural natural resources potential. So I think we have teachers in our district who could teach that class. So instead of hiring a full-time person, if the survey says they need that, maybe you said one of our teachers teach a section here and a section there and see how popular it is.
And you told me why you think our CTE classes are down for adding the third year of science?
Yeah, so I, I mentioned, you know, we talked about class sizes, and, and my classes, I'll tell you, are drastically down from where they've been, you know, historically. And part of that, we added a new science teacher, and so it opened a lot of third-year science opportunities for students. We have Ag Chem, Regular Chem, Anatomy and things like that offered. And so our juniors class, the ones that decide to take science their junior year, that's a small pool. And so we saw, uh, my horticulture classes is down by twenty kids, but they're taking Regular Chem, Ag Chem, or Anatomy. My new one that we just added, you know, that class was down from numbers we had predicted as well. But the same thing, just our pool of students who want to take a science-related class their, their junior year is just small. And so we had a lot of opportunities this year for them. And so as we move forward with that, part of that word of mouth, more students will want to take them because they're fun classes. But also, you know, as we look at building master schedules and stuff, it's always hard. There's, there's ROP that, you know, is only held certain periods for certain programs. There's honors classes, they're only held certain periods for certain programs. We're a small district, and, and we only have so many periods, I mean, six periods is not a lot. And so students have to choose wisely, and sometimes that means they have to make a choice of, of my class or honors English. And I'm not gonna tell them that they have to choose one or the other. Which one's gonna benefit them more is, is the idea, and the student has to make that choice.
So either a seventh period, seventh period day, or less requirements, move requirements to CTE instead of others?
I think, I think the level we're at is pretty well state-guided. I mean, we, we can't take away restrictions. You could look at a seventh period day, but that also runs into headaches with, with ROP scheduling, because there's other districts that are involved with that. So I don't have a perfect answer for you. I wish I did, but it, it's a matter of, of surveying and looking at what we can do. Maybe it's offering a couple of zero periods. We used to do that, you know, back in the day. And so if there's a thing, a zero period that a student really wants to take, they'll be here in the morning. And those are the kids we want in the classroom, if, if they want to do it.
Right.
Or, you know, maybe you, you look at offering an extended day to where it says a zero period, there is a seventh period, but it's only offered for, you know, a couple of sections. And a teacher takes that option on as well to, to open up some other class sections. So it's gonna take some, some, some work on, on our end and, and really kind of planning and doing it. But being flexible in, in the way that we think of a school day can really help us in seeing what other districts are doing, whether in-state and out-of-state, too, when it comes to CTE.
Thank you. Have we ever talked about, like, I, I don't know if it's ever been done here, but I've heard, um, some kids in, um, different districts have like a block schedule. Where they're doing like first, second, and third period one day, and then they're doing, um, those classes only twice a week. And then, you know, fourth, fifth, and sixth period on the other days. And then I've also heard other districts do a flex schedule, a flex period, where their fourth period is for, you know, if they have to go and make up an assignment or make up a test or something like that. Has it ever been done here?
I, I can't speak historically, but I can tell you that with our ROP structure, that, that also would not be a, a possibility. That ROP is only offered during those, they have two, two periods in the morning, two in the middle, two in the end. And, and that's between us and other districts, and we can change our schedule, but their schedule's not gonna change. And so you're looking at getting students in the right location at the right time.
In some terms, we do have some block schedules, uh, in a ROP, for example, that provides some, it'd be more of a modified block. In fact, you have a, a, a class, your, uh, your, your morning class is a block.
Yeah, that evening class is a block, block, modified schedule.
You know, and then it becomes, especially in a sixth period day, it becomes now you're, you're, that's really competing, you know, for that kid, investing two, two periods. Uh, somehow they're down to four. I came from a, a district that the high school was on a rotating block. And, and, uh, just my experience was it is hugely the wrong thing to do. What we, what we have is a long, long history of teaching kids for fifty minutes, sixty minutes. And so you go to a block that, that now becomes, uh, ninety to a hundred minutes, and you're still teaching for fifty minutes. And then huge amount of discipline problems academically, you know. Well, yeah. I could show you, I could show you the scores there. But as well, Central Valley had block. They've gone away.
In a class like Stephen's, a two-hour block is great. If you're in a shop class, two-hour block is great. But if you're in a highly academic class, trying to focus the two hours straight is kind of difficult.
Okay, so we will, can Mr. Booth, maybe, does your director curriculum come up with that survey for us? And then do we have to have parental permission for that?
For the kids, not the teachers. The way that the kids want.
I hear you.
Can you do pictures, art for the different occupations? Art for the different occupations for the kids, like a hammer for construction if they want construction? A horse for the Vet Tech one or Vet Assistant? Your micro imagery, your survey.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that Google. I'm gonna get what they gave me.
Just emojis of what they might want to do and just click on it.
Can we reward them for doing it?
But there was a serious question there, because the board wanted to get parent approval on all surveys. You want parent approval on CTE possibility surveys?
Yeah, I think the way that we have it now is all surveys are only to be done by admin, um, or approved by admin, any survey. Um, and then our opt-out is parents can opt-out of any survey or specific surveys. Did, do, did we codify any survey, need parent permission? Or is it surveys regarding mental health?
I can't recall.
It's surveys that are, that are mental health related.
Right. That's what I think, too, but I guess we should double-check.
Well, I'll, I'll certainly show it before, to you before, before we fly.
All right. Got it?
Got it.
Six twenty, replacement of aging computer systems in preparation, Windows 10, and a support informational. Six twenty. So is that you there?
Yep. You have any questions?
So for a hundred computers, it's a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Nine hundred, like roughly nine hundred and some bucks a piece.
So we have, how many theoretically do we have, the Windows 10?
Uh, way more than that.
I know.
Like four hundred and some, but we pulled three hundred out already.
So you got a half-million dollar bill.
Yeah, but we don't, we're, we haven't, we're not gonna need to spend that money. We've reduced the amount of computers on campus, because every student has issued a Chromebook. We've reduced the amount of areas that they, that we've needed to have or keep these computers. A lot of them did not have, hadn't been logged into all last year. We also have a nice library with all brand-new computers in it that any, any student can use anytime. And we have Chromebook carts all over the place. So if a student forgets a Chromebook, they can pick one up.
Are Chromebooks, they're all Windows 10, right?
No. They run a Chrome OS, yes.
I will say, Derek, this is a really good price. I actually checked. My husband works for TD's and X. And he does channel sales. It looks like you had a really significant discount. I don't know how you decided. Was it an educator's rebate or?
No, I mean ultimately, our reseller is usually pretty good at getting us a good rate. And they go back to Dell, you know, because they can run, if we can get something in before the end of a month or whatever, we'll get a better deal. Because they have to deal, those, those prices are direct with like Dell. Dell controls the pricing. So even the reseller doesn't get a lot of kickback on, on their side. So they were able to get us a pretty dang, dang good price. Because we couldn't get, basically, we could sure spend a lot less to get a Windows 11 computer. But they don't have, they don't have the technology that we need for, for the specific computers that we had to get. Because they have to have options for dual monitors and stuff like that.
I'll just tell you what, what I found, what my husband found through the system. What they would sell us for was a loan number of $6, and that's without their markup.
Yep.
So it's the same exact model that they get from Dell. Micro AJ is one of his customers.
Yep.
But he's not, yeah, I think those were sales rep. So he was telling me that you got a really good deal.
I think this was called an E-rate, education rate?
First, for certain things, like that, this is not part of E-rate though. This is just a direct purchase. Doesn't fit under the funding schedule for that.
I'll motion to approve, or we don't have to approve, it's just information.
So 621 federal grant sub-recipient insurance form?
That's just for information too, correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
Question for you?
622, this is action renewal agreement which asks for the Office of Ed for the 2526 legal services.
This is our, our share of Lasana Smith cost.
I actually have a question on this. Because the way that I'm reading it and understanding was this consortium system, forgive me for maybe putting this in these types of terms, it's probably not an apt comparison. But what I was gathering from this was it's like a, like we're, we're paying club dues. So we get to be in the club. We get to have these legal services one day per week. And the services are listed 1 through 5. And then we get their special rate. Is that correct? So we're still paying on top of the $7,000 for?
No, we pay, we pay a fee. And some years we use less than that, some years we use more.
So this fee is a flat fee then, through the consortium? So are there times where we're paying the, the 345? Because that, the last agreement was 250, wasn't it, we were paying? So this is gone up from 345, or from 250 to 345? So I'm just wondering, like, what's our total? That we are paying now?
I can look into that.
Well, I know for a fact a year ago, we paid over $100,000 for legal. Using the consortium.
So 100,000 on top of the $7,000 flat fee? So the $7,000 is just to be a part of the consortium, right?
Yes, correct.
Right, that's how I'm reading it. And to have access for that one day of the week. So I think that roughly, there's 28 school districts in that consortium. So Lasana Smith provides those services one day per week and just probably hopes that not all 28 need them on that day. Which is fine. My concern, and so the information that I would like, Jen, and last year, I think you did that for me. You gave me the whole last fiscal year of every invoice and everything we were billed for from Lasana Smith. So I still have that. But I'm wondering if we should just get a total from that and sit down and talk about it. Because I want to see really, are we really getting a discounted rate? Because in those stack of invoices from last year, their bill was 250 an hour. And now I see it's 345. So I just want to make sure we really are getting something for being in the consortium. And also, we've never done an evaluation to look at other, other legal firms to see what their costs are either. So I just want to make sure that we are getting a deal in the consortium, we're getting what we're paying for. And that there's not another law firm that we could maybe contract with.
But that's interesting that you're on the Shasta, I got opposite education board. And we're willing to be part of that group?
Yeah, I, I, that's interesting. You find that interesting. I don't, I don't, I'm not sure where you're going with that.
Well, and you're, you're telling us to get other posts, but you guys already have contracts with them.
I don't have a contract with them.
Well, you're on the board with them.
I don't personally have a contract with them. So this is for joining the consortium. So I just want to make sure that for our district, our money is being used the best way possible. And so I know like, for, for example, we are in SSDA. And Scoey now has a consortium for SSDA. Unfortunately, I, I don't know why, I don't know if this is miscommunication or whatnot, but we were able to secure the same rate that they're securing through their consortium. So now it's just making me question, are we really getting what we're, what, what they're saying we're getting by being in this consortium? I don't think that's too much to ask. Jen, do you understand the data that I need? Thank you.
I, I'm not sure what they mean by one day per week. Because I've called Jessica and Tom five days a week before.
Right, and we're, but we are getting billed for some of those. Because basically legal services, children provided one day per week. And those services include, and it says items 1 through 5, that is what I am understanding is that cost of 7,077. Because on top of that, like Joe said, and I haven't added up that stat that Joe was saying from the year before. We're paying on top of that as well. 7,000 is just the base fee just to go and use them if we wanted to that day. But we're being billed every time we email and call as well. And we're being, we were being billed at 250. This says 345.
Well, and Jessica, you asked last year for us to look at other firms too? And I don't think we ever did.
I don't think we did.
So you've brought that up a few times.
Yes, I have. For two and a half years.
So we're going to table this and not agree to it?
Then we don't have legal services? What you're saying, does it affect the first law? I would not suggest us to not agree to it and then end up being in the hole for the whole thing. If something happens, who's going to take this?
Well, technically, we should have did this prior to the agreement. We probably should have looked at this July 1st.
Lasana Smith has been our lawyers forever.
No, I understand, but we shouldn't be agreeing to agreement after it's been effective. If it was effective August 1st, we should have.
It was effective August 1st. You know, sometimes in fact practice, we've been in this consortium for years and years and years. And I know this board has requested to see every single contract come through. In the past, that wasn't the case. I agree, Mr. Gibson, on this issue, but we have to have legal services. And we're tomorrow going to do, give you the data to make decisions next month. We can do research and shop around, but we need legal services.
And I just don't want to be in this position that you can now another year in a row, which would be the third one next year, and be acting the same thing when I'm presented with it. So my vote to nay is going to be a no. But I'm not motioning to table it.
I don't think you care about.
What happens, what happens if we we, we vote this through today and then we want to get out of it?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, because you're saying we need legal services like, as of August 1st, this has already gone into effect. And we table it until next month. But come next month, we decide we found an alternative option that has better pricing. And then we go with that. How, what's the repercussion then pulling out of the consortium?
Yeah, it's not on the agreement, it just say.
But?
The cancellation clause.
Yeah, I think you can hear, watch and find out.
Oh, okay.
First off, you can't be going out and just hiring Joe Blow, law firm. They have to have expertise in school districts. They have to have expertise in contracts for everybody. There's not a lot out there. In fact, I won't put money on it. There are very, very few out there anywhere in this area. So, you know, it's not, it's not easy. And that's why I think we've had this contract with this company, because they specialize in education. That's their sole thing. So you're not going to find something out there in a week or two weeks. Maybe, maybe someone will come up down the road. But like I said, we've been with them forever. They've done us good. We have won a lot of lawsuits, that big ones that we've been involved with, they've helped us. And lawyers are expensive. So I mean, you just can't win whammies, ah, that's, we're going to close it. I mean, that, that's not, that's not how life is.
It isn't, but Joe, we also have to be respectful of each other's opinion. You don't do it just because you do it. We're also stewards of taxpayers' dollars. And for our own budget, we have our CBO who looks at different auditors. And even if, every year you look at different auditors that look at our books. We don't stick with the same one, even though they've been an awesome auditor. You look at it, so it doesn't do any harm to look and see what's out there. And then it just solidifies our choice.
I agree, it doesn't do any harm to look. But you need to approve a contract that's in force right now. And then I'm sure there's an out clause somewhere. I don't know what it is, because I don't have that here. But you just can't cut off your foot just because you feel like you need to.
We could, but we also brought this up for, she's brought it up every single year.
Too.
So we just need to know the cancellation case.
And I brought it up in anticipation of problems because of a pattern I've seen with Lasana Smith across the state. So let's not pretend like they're local. They're not local. They're based out of Sacramento and they're down in San Francisco. Tom travels here when he comes here. But I don't, I don't disagree. There aren't, aren't probably any locals. So regardless, it would be somebody that's not local. But to my credit, the, the thing that I had anticipated happening, which I agree, I think they're great when it comes to our defense. But that's not the only thing the board uses. The board trustees also use it for, for opinions and for memos and for legal advice on policy and regulation. And unfortunately, Lasana Smith has given us bad information several times. Because they're aligned with CSBA and CSBA put out some bad policy, 22 policies that they now had to retract because of that Mamu D. Taylor decision that I just read to you in part. So, so my concern is, yes, with the money and, and using it, taxpayers' money wisely. But, but also, I am concerned with some of the services that we're receiving.
I will find out tomorrow about cancellation B. I imagine worst-case scenario, we get, we pay the $7,077. We'll probably get to keep that. But if the hourly rate goes somewhere else, we pay somebody else. I'll find out tomorrow.
I would also like to just instruct that we go out to bid. There's no harm in going out to bid. I think if Jackie has been asking for this, then it should have been included with this packet before.
In my defense, I'm pretty good at good things on the journey when you guys ask. I would not give a direct to go out and bid on this.
What I'm asking for is, um, some, some options other than this.
We'll, we'll start agreeing to that immediately.
Well, I make the motion that we approve this contract tonight.
A second. So if we don't approve it tonight, we're without legal counsel?
Technically, yes.
I disagree. We have a whole nother contract with Lasana Smith. Huge contract with Lasana Smith. That's how they're able to bill us at that 345 and 150 when it's outside of that 7,077. This is just to be in the consortium. I, I disagree with that. I'm just going on record saying that because I, I just want you guys to know when you made your decision whether to vote on it, that I don't think it's going to mean we don't have legal services. I think it just means we're not in the consortium and we don't have to pay that 7,077.
And we won't give those rates, I'm sure.
Right.
It could be a lot higher rate.
Potentially, of course, yes.
There's motion on the floor.
And a second.
Jackie cannot vote.
Jackie is voting.
You can't vote it. You're part of the, you're part of the opposite education.
Thank you for your advice. On this item, I will vote. I don't think you can, Jackie, because Scoey's in the consortium. Scoey, Scoey is not the board. I know, but yours is the board of Scoey and it's their consortium and it's financial. And you're not supposed to vote on any financial matters. I think that's the caveat on it is to, what I think we need on it. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I'll call for a question.
Sorry, you guys asking me not to vote?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's different. Thank you. I respect that. I'll abstain. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's not?
Pardon me?
So abstain, two in favor.
You're voting against it?
Yeah.
Okay, so if it's a tie, then it's just status quo then, pass quo.
So it doesn't pass, it doesn't fail. It's just a third?
Yes, in order to get rid of it, you have a majority to get rid of it. That didn't happen, so it's status quo.
I actually didn't vote.
Okay, let's take the vote out loud, please, then. Roll call and vote.
Aye. Abstain?
Aye.
No?
Julia?
No.
Okay, so it's 2-2, status quo.
So then we're continuing to have legal services?
Yes. But I will still look to start tomorrow. I'll find out about cancellation B and look around for some other law firms to go bid.
623 revised LCAP 2526. Mr. Booth, was that you?
Actually, it wasn't. That was prior to me, but it's, anytime you submit the LCAP, it goes to the county office. They do their review. Most of the time, you'll get a kickback for things. In this case, in one side, it was due to the learning and recovery emergency block. We call it LREBG. Had to be cited in specific places within the LCAP.
It was new this year.
Which was new this year, totally new this year. And so for reporting purposes, it had to be cited in, in a couple of different places in there in which it wasn't. And then there's some other items.
Yeah, and so once the plan summary got updated, we also had to update the baseline columns. So everything's tied to the financial side. So once everything got updated, it changed the numbers. So I then wanted to go through the update numbers. Really, there wasn't very much, to be honest, that needed to be updated this year.
And that doesn't say action or anything on my copy, but it's because it's the top of the document. So do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes, 5-0. 624 is informational. Good. MOU with Reach Higher Shasta for the West Valley Early College High School Hydroponics Lab. The MOU, the Reach Higher Shasta for the West Valley Early College High School Hydroponics Lab.
Is there anyone to speak on that? I just had a question about it, I don't know who I'd direct my questions to.
I don't know if I'll be able to answer it or not.
Okay.
Try.
Um, so it sounds super cool, yay, hydroponics. Um, so basically, my understanding is, um, we're going to be given the $8,000 to do the startup. But then what's the plans for the future, and what cost, are you anticipating what, like, how that's going to be utilized, once we get the free startup?
Yeah, I don't, I don't foresee a whole lot of cost once it's started, that's the one thing about the hydroponics. We also do do plant sales and stuff, so I would assume we could recoup some there. I would have to ask questions, would you like me to get back to Mr. Parker with the answers?
Well, I, I mean, I'm assuming if that all goes on equipment.
Right.
I received a phone call from APD about two, three weeks ago, uh, they, whenever they confiscate hydroponic labs, they donate equipment back to schools, so we could get some donation possibly.
Oh, really? Okay, okay, so that's kind of just what I need to know, bare bones, this is, that $8,000 is pretty much going to get us set up with, to grow hydroponically. And then after that, it would just be additions to the water or whatnot, but it's not some.
Right.
Major system overhaul or anything, okay, thank you.
I still move?
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, 5-0. 625, agreement with Shasta Community College to participate in the Shasta-Tahima Trinity Adult Ed Consortium for the 2526 school year.
Motion to approve?
Who's got it?
I motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0. Reports and comments. Do we have any ETA reps or is the SDA?
Just want to say thank you everybody from tonight, and, uh, so far, it's been a really good startup school year. Even though some of the classes are small, I'm glad we are offering more offering, more offering for students. Hopefully, this next couple months will keep going smoothly. Really happy with, uh, my MRSDA team, it's a new, new face, and, um, I'm going to go shop and maybe do a great job for them. So, thank you.
Um, I went to the football game on Friday, and I had to text Mr. Dixby like at 8:30 at night to tell him how much I enjoyed the band teacher, because he was right in front of me, and it was just so neat to see a teacher so animated, and the kids into it. And one of the cheerleaders was actually playing the drums, so I saw a motion for her, she ran over, jumped the fence, and did a, I don't know what you call it, for music, did a routine?
Yeah.
And then went back and cheered, so it was good. But the one comment I do have to make, our acoustics suck really bad.
We, we put in a tech ticket Monday morning. Um, we have Earl come out and help, and then we have, we have four or five lone speakers that as soon as I get the things, I'm going to be sending, sending a purchase order to, to Jim, so we are on it.
That's, it was terrible.
Yeah.
Somebody turned it up too loud at some point, apparently.
Yeah, they used to be a lot better.
Well, it's going to be dialed in, we're going to, I, I was at Stanford, but, um, I've heard.
And then the gym, you, is the gym bad too?
Our gym, we fixed last year, but it's more of a technical issue than it is the system. So we have to have people trained on, if they turn it up too high, it gets feedback, so, um, it's been pretty good. We've got a really motivated leadership teacher and the kids run it for all of our games.
Does the baffling insulation help at all on acoustics?
I, uh, it's funny, I don't know, I can't tell, but I, I thought it was gonna. But it has made it cooler in there around five or six in the evening, noticeably. Still warm, but nowhere near like, like it was a year ago.
It was sad, the cheerleaders, it was hard for them to do their routine and stuff.
Well, the same thing happened at Red Bluff, to be clear, they had zero music at Red, when we went to Red Bluff, I was there, and the cheerleaders did not get to perform.
I know, I was like, oh, gosh.
Yeah, so I think it's going around.
I was like, we have the new score, the school scoreboard, and it looked great. And just the music, but the band, I loved the band, it was neat to see.
Joe, so?
You're coming.
Thank you, everybody, for being here and for your hard work. Um, I would like to, we're going to do legal services, um, potentially on the agenda for next month as we get the information by then, correct? Um, and then I would also like an information item on grant writing, because Stephen mentioned, um, that, and I just don't really know how that process works, but it's something I think that we need to look at, getting someone here maybe part-time to do it, or defining it to somebody to do. But, but, thank you.
Just want to say thank you, I know this was a really late meeting, um, and a lot of great discussion, and thank you for your feedback. Um, also, I wanted to see if we can have some kind of a discussion for, like, a marketing person? Someone who's doing our social media, like a dedicated person, who would be making all that happen for all of us out.
She's on maternity leave right now. She's really good at it.
When does she come back?
I, I don't know. You're allowed a fixed amount of time, you don't have to all take it all at once, you can take some time here, come back a week, take some more time. What might each director answer then?
Well, I've been wondering which, which alphabet you want to use, but yeah, it can be, it's going to be long.
Is there anyone we can pass up the tone to in the meanwhile?
I'm sorry?
Is there anyone we can pass her the tone to in the meantime, as she's gone? Can we, like, give, like, have it be like a rotating student responsibility or something like that?
We were looking, we were talking earlier up there, um, I know we were talking and doing some video, some cool videos and stuff, and I, and it, I don't know, I'm not sure. There used to be a student here, I know he's, he's going on, yeah, uh, that does drone video and all sorts of stuff. And I'd like to reach out and see if he's still in the area or what he's doing.
I reached out two years ago, you got a new job, and did a good new it.
Did new it. And so finding somebody like that is like a unicorn, but we'll look, we'll look, and we'll, we'll try to come up. Uh, maybe, maybe we have some kids that, you know, they're, they're into it, uh, into doing something like that. So maybe working with some leadership, and trying to pull, pull them in to do that.
Mr. Fulcher teaches a digital media's course, so it might be something to see if he has any students that are interested in that. Like out of West Valley, there's a digital media piece too.
Yeah, we already do it pretty, I think we're doing a pretty good job. Last year, a year before, we voted to have an onsite stipend, and ours is Kat, she's doing pretty good. She goes to the leadership classroom and asks for, so I think it's decent, it's not like a professional would be, like you're asking for, because she's got a full-time busy job, and she just does that.
Yeah, but I see, like, on Facebook, the stories that West Valley, uh, puts on, and, you know, there's a, I just, it's in my feed all the time.
Yeah, that's.
So I'd love to see that for more of the sites, and, you know, if we were to find someone to do, kind of like a video that goes on the district website, um, or, you know, each school site, but it's like, you know, just like a one-time thing, one video, but to have someone do.
Yeah, I think there's a company written called Pacific Sky.
Yeah.
I hired them before, to make a video there, I have two office members here, um, and we talked about that. I'll bring that to the gym next month, I'll get a bid to make a CTE pathway video, that we could, we could market out the community. Because I think we did a good job, I think we did a good job telling our families that are here what we do, but trying to get more of them now to the family that are making that choice, to come here or not.
Right, yeah.
So I'll bring that back next week.
Yeah, and I would love to see if you can work with the, um, other site administrators to kind of carbon copy what you're doing for your social media. If there's, like, ASB students or leadership or something that can kind of take on that role. I even was thinking, like, it may be a senior project, you know, having, having some kids work on a video for a senior project.
What about an attachment to whoever's working on the yearbook?
Yeah, so that's interesting.
If they're out there doing it for the yearbook, couldn't that be a component?
Yeah.
Work real easily.
That makes sense, yeah. It's a great idea. Thank you, Margot.
Any other comments on the board?
Thank you.